Well, I can see our both eyes just made each thing. It's gonna be a little better here. Uh, minutes.
Before Easter. So, attendance will be low in terms of who's around town to enjoy it, but he anticipates getting over.
And they already keep me up in the summertime at night, and I'm .8 miles from the closest one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We've got a lot, uh, some detail going. Uh, you know, and President will work with you and add a little bit, but, uh, you know, this is something that we'll, we'll look at as a plan.
That'll be great.
And, uh, certainly get back to you shortly.
Perfect, thank you so much.
True, Fred.
I was gonna say, I know, I have a friend who owns one in Naples, and they're booked all the way through, I think, almost 2021. And it's a bar, it's a same thing, a nice outdoor, a bar, a nice outdoor view, and it's a good, a good timing.
Thank you. We have been in the real estate business for about 10 years, but something like this, it's our first time, and all our properties are located in Henrietta Rochester area. So this is our first time here, but I know these weddings are very expensive, so we wanted to make it affordable and easier for everyone. And I believe in this little town, there are not many buildings, and the location is just perfect for what it offers, so.
That is nice, sir.
Thank you. Anything else for me? Nope.
Are you meeting with Fred again in the near future?
Yes, I will be meeting with Fred. We have a couple of inspectors to talk to, but I wanted to just come here first, make sure. We have your, this is your town, you guys have been here for years, so get your blessings on that, and then we'll talk to Fred on the phone here.
Okay, for sure. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, old business telecommunications. Uh, um.
I just wanted to get scammed, do you wanna do a lot of those or pick it up?
Oh, okay, we got, yeah, we're all set. Yeah. All right, auto bills.
Make a motion.
Motion made, second, through the auto bills presented, all favorites. Hold. All right, carry. I didn't pause, I just was waiting. Uh, okay. Let's go to telecommunications. Last meeting, we talked briefly about this, and Angela had some thoughts on the legislative findings, and, uh, I would, if the board still wants to go ahead with this law, I would suggest that I be authorized to make some changes to that language in section two, legislative findings. You are gonna do what's compatible.
You did not get my, you didn't get my email, and you want my handout that I, this was my talking points at the meeting, and it's pretty much the same stuff that I was saying, you know, something.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, one of my big concerns is, we do receive tax revenue from these towers, at full value, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Depends on the, yeah. Goodbye, ladies. Generally, that, to answer your questions, yes.
So, you know, I wouldn't wanna be making it sound destructive that for shooting ourselves or folks, if we got it, right?
It's up to the board how they wanna handle this. The thought was at one point that they wanted to limit the number of towers, so, especially when the tower's support more than.
Right, right, that is.
That was my concern in transition.
Now, does that alter the tax, uh, assessment?
Probably not, but I'm not, we have to consult with the assessor on that.
Okay.
But I doubt it. Depends how you, how they value the property.
Okay.
Whether it's based on income, or whatever. But I, I will point out that that sort of infrastructure, uh, is subject to having the value reduced every year, but it's, uh, potentially works out.
Well, yeah.
And they tax us if we can use that.
I'd like a little bit more information, you know, Angela's pointing about, you know, the possibility of additional tax revenue. Maybe something we can ask the assessor about this.
I talked to her about that. I, I know we talked before, and then she kinda indicated, if my research is correct, that, uh, let's see, the equipment more than the tower is taxed, and then the tower has some tax, and it's equipment is, is where the worth is.
Well, yeah, I think that is for more of a state and county tax, it's sort of like a usage of it. You look at your cell phone bills, you always have a million taxes on top of, I don't, I think Angela was talking more land tax than our sales tax.
Well, that's, well, that falls into value. I'll talk to, she'll be in a minute.
Thank you.
How strict can this law be? If, if co-location of equipment largely depends on design and the surrounding network for that provider, what do you do when it's not feasible for them to put in at the same time?
I don't recall the exact language, Pete, but, uh, what it does is indicates that where co-location can occur, the existing tower should be utilized. And in formulating that, determining that, uh, there's certain spacing that's required, so on and so forth, uh, so that, those are fa, those are all factors.
How would we, how would we challenge a situation where a network provider was looking to put up their own tower? Where does that technical expertise come from? To determine that something that our part of could be co-located?
It would be any, it would be any, like any other type of zoning, uh, question of what come up. The town board, and actually is acting as the planning board, could, uh, hire it and require the applicant to pay it. The way this is stated here, the applicant shall agree to design, build, or modify the tower to accommodate up to two additional telecommunications facilities, could there be a need, a future need for such services? So each tower is ready to have at least three telecommunications. And we were doing the Department of Commerce, too, on this, uh, those last four. The, uh, FCC has regulations on the S.O.S., and, uh, they trump any loophole.
In terms of power, like the lighting?
That's where we thought out one, that the applicant for that co-location came in. Let's, uh, make some, uh, changes, additions, versions on this, uh, I'd suggest we hear from the assessor first.
Yeah, as we can tell, yeah. Two chances to end.
All right. Dog kennel kind. Did you, did you get that resolution? Yeah, I guess I have. I got it.
Yeah.
I had extras.
I only got the, this.
All right.
Oh, it's not, it was an email.
I must have checked, I checked my email this morning, before I come in, check it.
I have an extra, something.
No, that's fine.
I have a bunch of them.
I'll take it.
There you go.
Over the shoulder, did a lot of it.
You guys have it, right? Or you don't?
I have, I printed it out, I remember they told me twice, I didn't purchase mine.
In your way.
I was a little more used to friendly, too, all that, I figured.
Careful reading that stuff in the bark, yeah.
Oh, so, okay. Uh, let's, uh.
So this is the one, basically, that we got over with them when she was here, and this is the revised, per.
Well, this isn't the contract, they say, this is the resolution, which is required to authorize.
Oh, okay.
Land to sign that contract or, you know. I called the supervisor and talked to her.
Right.
And, uh, she indicated that, uh, they don't sign kennels, anybody, the kennels are there.
Oh, okay.
To be used by whoever, and she says they've never had a problem.
Oh.
With overflow. She said if they did have a problem, they have playroom in the center, and then they have these portals that they can set up.
That's even better than what the original contract was, so.
They, uh, they've never had it.
Okay, that's good.
Well, that, I just wanna point out, that's verbal.
No, I know, I know.
The contract that we have has all of them reserved for everybody else, so hopefully there won't be an issue. There's an escape clause in there, where we can get out of it, like 30 days or something, if we need to.
But based on history.
It's every, one, right, based on what Len was told by the supervisor, and I was told by the town clerk, there's never been a problem.
Well, even Deb said the same thing, she said.
She did, she said the same thing.
No, I don't.
Hopefully it'll work out fine.
It sounds like they changed things and never updated the paperwork.
Uh, no, it sounded to me more like there was a payback deal. So, a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the town of Wayland for use of the town.
Second.
Motion made, second, to approve the, uh, approving the agreement for, uh, dog, uh, penning for, uh, illegal dogs, or whatever, to your, uh, dog catcher, against all Wayland, all favorites.
Aye.
All right, opposed, carried.
I think they all have one, right?
Keep them, dispose of them.
You guys all have your next resolution?
I mean, I have two of them.
You got two of them, okay, I'll take yours.
Uh, Angela, are you familiar with what this was?
Yeah, I was here, actually, when the first one was passed.
This is just a.
Right.
A redo, because you're on the board now, it's a new board, so the old one is essentially not in effect anymore.
Yeah.
It's the same wording, only the dates have been changed.
Right, yeah, no, I think I, I was at that meeting, you guys are doctors.
So, all right, to the, uh, dog kennel, the, uh, we talked about the eminent domain. You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution for the determination not to, not to use eminent domain for any purpose related to private enterprise.
I'll respect it.
Motion, yes.
Not to any private, it's why it's.
Apparently, we made some coverage of it. Motion made, and second, as to, to use an eminent domain for any, uh, project in the town of Crasford in the year 2020.
Now, is this for 2020, or the whole, short term?
The entire length of this board.
Board, okay.
So when there's another election in two years, if somebody else comes out, we should redo it then.
Okay.
All the favor.
Aye.
All right, opposed, carried. Before I forget, I, the reason I wanted to make the procedural comment earlier was that I got the impression from some of the folks that were talking, that they thought that this board had the final say on whether that project, or not, that was important.
No, I think that was.
No, I was walking that. I have, uh, a couple, the, uh, that, every year we, uh, are assessed $500 to the Environmental Emergency Services. Uh, we've done it for years, uh, with, uh, what it is, is they, uh, they have sites that watch the flow of the rivers, and creeks, and, uh, snowfall, everything, it's just a, it's a, a good service. So I'm proposing that we, again, this year, go with the, the $500.
We budget for it, right? We budget for it every year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. All right, motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made, and second, that we again join the Environmental Emergency Services.
All dumping out.
And, uh, at the cost of $500. All the favor.
Who's second?
Pete's got a second.
Pete got second?
Yeah, Pete got second.
I noticed.
Come on, God.
All right, people.
No post.
No post, gone. The Cub Scouts, uh, it's, it's, uh, become a, like everything else, these kids now are assessed, uh, forty-eight, from forty-eight dollars, uh, to seventy-two dollars, uh, a year, for reg, for the cost of registering. And, uh, ours being a, you know, some families can't, can't afford it, and we have monies in youth, uh, in some, for summer youth programs that, uh, the Little League doesn't use, they got, they knew all their fundraisers and that, so they don't use a lot of it anymore, so, uh, they're asking for, uh, some help, whatever help we can give them through this, our youth program.
How large is the PAC, you know?
Big, big.
Do you know how large the PAC is, how many numbers are there?
Uh, I think I had them all up to a couple thing. I, I would say it was.
Maybe around 10?
There was 10 to 15, there were, one time, there was quite a bunch of them that were fishing.
It'd be sad if some young person was not able to participate, they lack the fun.
That's the point. It is a good, uh, good program. John Carpenter heads it up, and Trina, and John Underhill are involved, and, uh, many others. And we have, uh, a scout camp upon the reservoir property that we developed quite a few years ago, and, uh, they come up and, and we did some clearing here last year, and we're gonna do some more this year, so that they can use that. And I would agree, the Girl Scouts also use it, I said, just, so hopefully, they'll put it to good use as a good spot.
Oh, there's 24.
24?
24 Cub Scouts?
Yep.
That's right. We don't have a scout troop, which I dearly hope we can.
You mean a boy scout troop?
Do something with that here, certainly.
Would it be appropriate for me to suggest that, since it's a Girl Scout troop, and gentlemen, whatever you're proposing, would include the Girl Scouts?
You know, that, I, they haven't said anything, I don't know what, uh, what their status is, they haven't, uh, I don't know if we can leave it open. Why don't we leave it open for organized youth, federally?
Now, how would that happen, though, and I, you know, I buy every crap thing that they sell, because I support them, whether I eat it or not, or want it or not.
Eh, don't kiss, you need it all.
No, yeah, eh, no, oh, I definitely not buy it.
I would.
Girl Scouts.
I got about $200,000 back.
However, I just, I, I, this, and this came up, we were talking about the youth, um, the Little League project and that, I don't like giving them money, but I really would like to see somebody here to make a case, A, or B, at least have an accounting of what is the money being used for. Like, I don't like, like, we gave money to the senior citizens, and it was sent to the wrong person, because that person was no longer in charge of the seniors, and it's like, we can't just do that.
Similar to what the library used to do, and what his source, like, he does, just?
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that this fund be established under, on the budget.
Well, John, John is gonna be here.
Right, right.
And he's scripting, so.
But like, you know, they want money, and how much are they looking for?
My point is that when they need it, they come with a specific request, so if you get three young people out there who need assistance to pay their registration fee, then they come here and say, this is the case, we need X number of dollars.
So the fund is approved globally as a fund, and then we.
It could be for Little League, it could be for soccer, if you have soccer, for scouting.
Because it is youth services, is what it's called anyway, right?
Yeah, so you, you probably have an FFA.
Oh, yeah.
This, uh, but, uh, the little guys, they don't, I mean, they sell, we got cheese, we got, well, we got.
You can only sell some.
That's on Tom Live anymore?
I love to.
Okay, that was.
Obviously, this isn't to replace their efforts to raise money.
Right.
Right. This is just.
Prefer.
My name's Tom McAllister, I'm kind of a map guy. I own land up, uh, I own the land in three counties, so I'm unlucky in that way. Um, I just wanna talk about Kevin for a minute, and what you're getting in your, your information, and the accuracy of the information. So I've taken the FAA installations that were given, I've taken the landowners that have already signed either home agreements, good neighbors, they're called, or turbines, and I put it all on a map, and kind of combined it, and one of the things I, I've noticed is, and this, some of this is, I'm hearing this through other, talking to other people, that even like, like Tony mentioned how close one was to the back of his property, and he's a councilperson, Kevin responded, it won't be there. Then Melissa said, we've got him across the street, and I don't really like that, and he responded, well, that one's not there. Then, he said, the closest one is on Burks, which eliminated one that is in Angela's backyard, because that would be closer to Burks. The Burks received a contract, and I don't know if they get money, 'cause all the contracts are listed as zero, because they don't want you to know what they're getting. There is no FAA sighting on the Burks, it's on my property, 325 feet into it. 1,600 feet at the minimum away from where Burks could potentially put it. So when he talks, gives you something that's accurate, or some information, you take that with a grain of salt, and also, he's going around and signing, um, agreements with neighbor agreements, when he doesn't even know where they're going. I've also noticed that, I'm, I'm plotting the neighbor agreements, and Ecogen owns some property up by 53, north of, north of your property, where Ecogen has a big slice. He's signed all the neighbors above that, five different parcels, but there's no turbine within any place. So he says he doesn't know where they are, but he's signing up bunches of neighbors in areas where there's no turbine sighted. So I'm just giving you my map information, so that you are aware of when somebody comes calling, what, what they may do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb?
May I ask a question off that? I think that might be my answer. Why did the turbine company have to file for the FAA right now? Could they not have waited till they got more accurate sightings?
They could have, but, uh, they chose to do it now. Uh, they're gonna have to do it again, also, when they have the exact sites located.
Why not have done it when they had the exact sites located instead of.
They're gonna do it again now, they have to do it again now, that is my understanding. Pete, Pete reviewed all this stuff, too, at least.
I think they're gonna have to do it even for the, the collection system.
Pardon me?
They're gonna, I think they're gonna have to do it again for the collection system, because, uh, for the voltage you were saying, they're gonna try to capture, I mean, there's gonna be a minimum, the structure's gonna be a minimum of 100 feet tall.
You're talking about the transmission lines to get to the substation, or whatever they're getting down to.
The bottom line is, they did not have to submit it to SOF.
Hey, didn't they have something to do with radar?
Yeah, it had to do with handoff between multiple airports and the radar. I, I get your point.
Even that.
Yeah, I get your point, Tom, that they could have waited. Um, I, I think their fear is, is that they would be behind the call if, if the FAA delayed their response to them, so.
Behind what? If the FAA delayed their response, they can go back and forth with the FAA then.
They wanna go as fast as possible?
In order to snort.
Right, yeah.
Love that.
Chris?
I'd like to give my three minutes to Brad Jones to continue his assessment.
Okay, Brad Jones, I feel it.
Big, big.
Got some copies for the board? In my first three minutes, I think we got to the point where I told you that our calculations indicate that a safe setback to 5.4 megawatt unit is somewhere around by the 5 miles. The map that I just handed out is a five-mile map, five-mile distance map, and it shows you exactly how much of your neighbor's property this project would take over and make unsafe. It's about 8, 95% of the town of Naples, 80% of Italy, about a third of, of Jerusalem, half of Palme, all of Wheeler, all of Avoca, a slice of Howard, Fremont, Danville, most of Fort Houghton, small amount of Wayland, and nearly all of Naples. So, this is a huge, huge amount of property. You see how far, how close it gets to Cuba Lake? Talk to the Cuba Lake Association, that's the association that represents all of the people who live on the lake, and it's 66 miles of waterfront. Do you think that they are going to want to look at their sunsets with 300, I'm sorry, 3,700-foot towers lit all night?
You can't see it, so. There's no way you can see it from down there.
695, uh, if you do the map, and you look at the map, it's right there, you can't possibly miss it. It's talking about the east side of the lake, that's their sunset, that's their view shot. So, we're gonna organize each of the towns here, listen all together, and decide what we're gonna do to oppose this project, because there's no way that you can put 5.4 megawatt units anywhere where there are people living. It will sicken them, it'll kill them, and you're gonna have to put in new intensive care up at Thompson to take care of little babies. That's what you're bringing to town, though.
Greg? Deb?
My name's Carl Wallstrom. Some of you have heard some of this before, but I wanted to repeat it. Um, I was on the zoning commission with Lenny, we established the industrial wind laws that had the 2.36 times the radius, plus the radius, I forgot the formula here. Um, we went back and forth trying to determine that, looking at scientific studies. Um, there was a study done by Ecogen, where they hired University of California Berkeley to do a risk analysis. All of those documents are supposed to appear in the secret document, this one never did. So it's pick and choose. Um, about two years ago, the board was consolidating the industrial use laws into one document, and I asked him for a copy, and I noticed the wind information was blank, so I figured, you know, I, I thought we'd worked through this, and we have something that people agreed upon, so I thought, oh, they're trying to fast one. So I rallied the troops, and got about 20 extra people here, and brought it up, and I felt embarrassed, because I was told, no, that's not there, because it's all complete, and I was also told, it's a dumb deal, you're beating the dead horse, and I'm like, good, we have a board that's really gonna stand behind its laws. So this guy, Kevin Sheen, comes in and says, oh, we love to work with you, we can't work with Italy, but we'd love to work with you, but your setbacks are too far. Automatically, the majority of the board said, we can change that. They found some studies, and I would bet a dollar to a donut that those studies were done by the American Wind Energy Association, which is a pro-wind lobbying group. If you go look at Teragin's website and all their studies, then you look at the small print, it's all American Wind Energy Association, it's not true independent refereed studies. So now we've got it changed, and hoping, and I asked the board to do its due diligence, but Kevin, to me, is a master of what he doesn't say, or he slips sometimes, and we catch him. I asked him at the last meeting, when he was here, have you decided the size of the turbines? He told me, no. Well, he talked to a person on their property, and told this person, we're using the 5.4, so I caught him in a lie there. And then he said, when he first came in here, we're using the newer, more, the quieter turbines. What we're finding, others are not quieter. And the other thing that you really need to consider, and it seems to be above most of our heads, is the infrasound. It will make you physically sick. We had two acoustical engineers who came here previously, and both of them said, setbacks are too short, this is before we established the older law, and the decibels are too high. But the one gentleman said, let me tell you about low decibels, and he gave examples of a, of a company he was working for, where a big piece of machinery wasn't damped properly, and people were getting physically sick by the low RPMs, the low sound. Um, he thought it might have been something in the kitchen, bad food, it is the low sound that you can hear, it will make you sick. Uh, the other thing, I remember when he first came in, Tony and John and I stepped outside, and he goes, oh, 20 to 32 turbines, the website said 35 to 40. And I remember, in talking, we said, you know, 20 could be doable, 20 could be doable. 35, I highly question that.
Anybody else? Yeah.
My name is Betsy Peacock, new in town. We just bought some property up across from Melissa and Mark last summer. We looked for years to find the right place, and when we got to the top of that hill, we just fell in love with it. And we've been making plans to build up there when we can afford it, which unfortunately now we have on hold. We believe that there are enough questions about the wind turbines that we wanna know a lot more. And we hope that the board, who is entrusted with safeguarding our safety, our environmental concerns, will take our questions very, very seriously. I think the burden of proof is on Teragen. They should be able to tell us with evidence that there is no risk, and tell us positively what the benefits are gonna be, not only to the lease, leaseholders, but to everybody. Everybody who lives in this town or around this town. So I think they have some work to do to show us what their evidence is, and once they present it, I hope that the town will take the additional step of verifying any of their evidence, the independent study. And so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Melissa, would you like any more time or Brad?
Um, yeah.
Okay, three minutes.
We're past the twenty minutes.
We're past the twenty minutes.
Can I make a comment on procedure here?
Yeah.
Um, the town board understands all of the concerns you're putting forward, but there's one thing that needs to be pointed out. And that is, even if this board were totally opposed to the project, and even if this board were to adopt rules or regulations or local laws that essentially prohibited that development, if that didn't scare Teragen away or make them change their mind about coming here, they can still go ahead and present the project to the sighting board, which although will have two people ad hoc members potentially from this community on, to speak on the community's behalf. There are five chairpersons of commissions of the state of New York to sit on it and make the final decision. There's, we've been reviewing Article Ten, and most of you are aware of Article Ten. Not only is it a state law, but there's a body of regulations that have been adopted for that Article Ten procedure. There's a procedure, and a part of Article Ten near the end, that states that if the sighting board believes that any local laws or regulations established by a community are unreasonably burdensome to the project, those laws can be set aside by the state of New York, and the project can be approved. That's one thing that has to be understood. The other thing is that at the time that the process is going forward, and the first step will be, in the next month or so, there'll be a scoping document submitted. That's a pre-application requirement by the law, and that will give this board some information and the community some information about it. There'll be a, at least a six-month period while that scoping process is going on, when items of importance can be submitted to the sighting board. And that's where all this information that we're hearing tonight should be submitted, because this town board could say, we don't want you here, go away, never come back. And they don't have to listen, because they know that there's an agency through the Public Service Commission that can make a decision contrary to what the town wants. So all this medical information needs to be submitted to the sighting board. There's public information coordinator, coordinator for the Public Service Commission, who's in charge of making sure that all information is received by the sighting board, and all information is made available to the community.
Ed, can I just make a comment on Article Ten? The purpose of Article Ten was to enable exactly what you've described, sighting board, to determine where in fact electrical generating facilities would be built, so that they would be built closest to the load as possible, which means they would have to be built in, in metropolitan New York City. Nobody ever thought that Article Ten would be perverted to put turbines in Cataragus County, which is four hundred miles from New York City, and there's zero transmission capacity available to move high voltage down to New York City. So.
That's, sir, can I interrupt on that one?
Sure.
That's false.
What is false?
There's a trans, two thirty transmission line in Cohocton that feeds New York City.
I think you're wrong.
Goes directly there, and that's where this is.
Okay, I've got the twelve-page letter from NIOSO, PFC, in twenty sixteen, that describes page after page, we cannot move one kilowatt from upstate to downstate. That's what NIOSO, who runs the grid, says.
Brad, the point I'm making is that the state legislature from adopted Article Ten for this purpose. The governor signed it. It's a state law. It's applicable throughout the state of New York. And anyone who wants to can look up Article Ten and the regs that go with it, under the New York State Code of Rules and Regulations, and go through it. There's probably thirty pages that make up this law, and it starts out with the preliminary stuff, definitions, and the whole thing, and goes right through the issuance of the permit and all that procedure. It's important, Brad, if you folks feel strongly about this, that you submit your data to the sighting board. And there will be a public hearing at some point by the sighting board, which can be attended by the public.
So when kids get sick, who do we go after?
Hey, okay, we're not hearing the back and forth. Ed wanted to speak, he spoke, you've had your time. Listen.
Would it be appropriate for me just to ask you a question about what we're just saying?
Something, boy.
I don't have to speak, I just have a question.
So, okay. All right.
Let me, you want me to stick around after the meeting if somebody wants to talk to me, please, Brad?
If you want. All right, uh, let's move on to, uh, old business. Uh, we got our young family here. Let's, uh, clever. They wanna get their kids.
Good evening, members of the town. Now, since I know I'm not time, I can talk a little slower. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Barack Amin. This is my husband, Joshua Harmon. We reside at the town of Pittsburgh, close to Rochester, in the other neighborhood. But recently, we purchased a property at Petford, and we are here to ask for your permission to turn the barn part of the building into our inn and hall. For that purpose, we would have to add a gravel parking lot, expand the parking lot. The barn already exists, it's a brand new barn, about seven to ten years old. There, it also has electric panels. We just have to add fixtures to it. So the only thing we will be adding to this will be expanding the driveway, turn that into a gravel driver, and add lighting to the fixture. We will not be serving food or beverages. We won't have the, uh, we won't go that far. We'll just put it that way. The house is located around four hundred acres. We barely three neighbors in the neighborhood, as it was very important to us to have a location where it won't bother the neighbors. So we are here asking for your permission to turn that into a commercial building.
Hello?
I'm not sure how these are, these things are done here, so if you have any questions, we'll sit for.
Is this the Higgins property?
We're not Pittsburgh, so. We're a little, little.
We love it here, and that was the reason we wanted to do this here.
Is this a Higgins property, or Tim Higgins you saw?
Lenny.
I honestly.
Taffalaya and Tallow Road, right, right across the road from it.
They just built a red barn on the left-hand side.
Oh, okay.
First guy.
And you said it's an event car?
Yes, the barn car, we would like to turn it for, for all kinds of events.
Okay. So now would people be bringing in their own catering? Right, okay, right, right.
We'll provide chairs and tables, the bar, and the house. It's a beautiful property. It has twenty-five acres of land, and it's, it only has three, four neighbors around that four hundred acres. And they will be taking care of their food, beverages, anything else that requires license.
The, uh, you talked to Fred?
Correct. I have talked to Fred. I have talked to a lot of people in this town. I have to say, though, we have been so welcome in this neighborhood. People are very friendly here, although it's an hour away from where we are. We really like it here. The only concern is we have three little kids. Otherwise, we would just move here. It's beautiful.
Well, over a hundred competitors.
And there's, it's a sight to see. You see two, two hundred and fifty race, racing bikes go underneath that stoplight one. I mean, that is really, uh, it's, uh, it, it's, I've got some pictures from up on the store. It's really, it's, uh.
We, we had two competitors last year. We had a, the world championship cycle cross racer and the national champion, Jeremy Powers, and they were just incredible advocates for their sport, and spent a lot of time with kids over at the school after the event. Like, they really get something to come out and, and see what tracks we're gonna get, competitors or, you know, athletes of that stature in the community again, so. It's good stuff.
It's, uh, and we hope maybe a time to develop more around this in the park. It's, uh, the date kind of hurts it, being so close to Easter. We're hoping that they can move that.
Well, the Easter's the thing.
Easter jumps around, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's always been a ghost Easter, so it's.
When is school recess?
It's week before.
The week before or after?
It starts the, I think kids would just be coming back on that weekend.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's, it's great fun. And they're great people.
They're fantastic people. We, we need to work out details on the permit for the park, because they wanted to, they've got two breweries sponsoring this race, and have we worked that out?
Well, we, we got a proposed agreement, but we don't know the details. Normally, when you have a event like this, you have a meeting a couple months ahead of time. Is there a possibility of getting somebody here?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We, we just met last meeting.
I'd be more than happy to come over anytime that you can set it up.
And I'll reach out to Tony and, and stuff.
I asked them before that we needed more detail on, but they were gonna, you know, their thoughts. And the meat with the brewery, the owners, the representatives, so.
Okay.
Because they gotta understand our, uh, our needs here.
Sure, okay. Um, the other thing that we, just so you know, um, the week before the race, on April fourth, they'll be doing a, a dry run of the course. So you see a lot of the racers out here, the prior day before the race.
Yeah. They love Prasburg.
I didn't realize that was actually a coworker, Melissa Malone is coming down for it.
Would it be good to see if they could come on the twenty-seventh also?
It's up to the board.
Yeah.
That would work for me.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Yeah, that would, that would be. Do the, how long do you think they had energy in Prasburg, an hour? Four hours, right?
Yeah.
It's about fifteen minutes at least. Yeah, we're gonna set a timer. So, have the bike people here ready? Is that reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you, Pete. Thanks for the help. I appreciate it.
Can I say over to Tony?
You brought up a, I don't mean to interrupt, but you brought up, start to get, you brought up a question about virtual reality.
Hmm.
That's about.
Oh, thanks.
It costs a few bucks, but it's worth it.
Thanks. Yeah, that's very interesting.
My guess is, well, I have. Now, uh, we're gonna open up to the, uh, the people here. Our guests, uh, we're asking three minutes. We'll, and it'll go on for about twenty minutes, so. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Where would you like me to stand, Lenny?
Anybody?
Where would you like me to stand?
Right there. Wherever you are.
I'll just go with her. Excuse me, Lenny, is this privilege of the floor? Excellent. Uh, my name's Brad Jones, and I'm a former town supervisor over in the town of Italy, and also a planning board member. And today, I'm gonna very briefly talk about how we get to safe setbacks for industrial wind turbines. And first, I'm gonna just read a couple of sentences that clearly describe the main issues with regard to harmful impact on humans and others. Recently published, peer-reviewed, comprehensive information regarding medical doctors. Mythologists and engineers strongly warn of major physiological consequences of living too close to industrial wind turbines. One of these is called wind turbine syndrome, which produces several symptoms related to the vestibular system. That's the balance organs. Disturbed sleep, headaches, tinnitus, a sense of quivering or vibration, nervousness, rapid heartbeat, nausea, difficulty with concentration, memory loss, variability, and anger. The other is vibroacoustic disease, which causes direct damage to tissues, organs, and bodily systems. So, I'm gonna move on to that. Next one here. So, the first step in determining safe setbacks for turbines is to identify someone has done a scienti, taken a scientific approach to determining for a specific sized turbine, what would be a safe setback for that. That was done a few years ago by the Providence Observatory Department of Health. They had hundreds of complaints from the turbines just north of the lake area. So, so they decided to do a worldwide literature study of impacts on humans from wind turbines. And it's gonna try to focus particularly on the one point five turbines they had there. So, that's kind of my baseline. I start from that. And that particular setback that they established there was two thousand meters, which is six thousand six hundred feet from residences. So, if we then wanna compare that one point five as a baseline to five point four, which is approximately the size that's being proposed from here, we basically do the ratio five point five, five point four, I've got copies of this for you. Five point four divided by one point five times the sixty-six hundred feet, which we need to divide that by fifty-two eighty, we have four and a half miles. So the safe setback for the turbines based on those ratios would be four point five miles to residences. We also have other work from Cohocton that has shown that the approximate setback that works there from the point of view of residents is approximately two point two five miles. Converting that to the five point four comes out with a setback to the five point four of four point nine miles. Averaging that, those two bases, it's four point seven miles. So is there error in there? Of course, there's error, because there's judgment applied. But as you've said for some time, you did not measure turbine setbacks in feet. They're measured in miles. So I've got one more. Anyone want to talk, over this here? I'll leave some copies here for you.
Three minutes.
Just three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody wants to give their time over to me?
Josh.
Yeah. I have, uh, things to hand out to the town board. If somebody could forward that. Okay, um, we're talking a lot about numbers, uh, but I wanted to mention what, uh, what noise that view shed means to a lot of citizens. Uh, I think all of you probably remember Judge Cal Graham over in Cohocton. He signed the lease with First Wind, who told them, you'll never hear the turbines. And it turned out for him, excuse me, that it became a living hell. He invited me up on a winter day, light wind, didn't sound bad. He mentioned over coffee, we hear them inside the house twenty-four hours a day. And I said I couldn't hear it. But maybe I could have been turned off his furnace, but his furnace was off. That was the vibrations and the sound of the wind turbine shaking his house. He was living on the inside of a loudspeaker. He's passed away now, about a year and a half ago. To what degree that might have contributed, I do not know. But you don't hear Lovello or Kevin Sheen talking about this noise problem, do you? So another point here is every house in Ingleside is within thirty-one hundred to thirty-eight hundred feet of wind turbine site one. And at that site, it's a five hundred feet straight shoot down the hill to the center of the hamlet. Consider the megaphone effect of the sound rushing down the hill, bathing these homes in noise. Is there anyone here that believes that the town of Prasburg would ever consider placing turbines this close to the Prasburg hamlet? Right? Right? These, I don't think that my neighbors in Ingleside are acceptable collateral damage in some war against global warming. Or just, we should actually sacrifice them just so we get a little bit money off our taxes. Now, I sat down with Kevin Sheen a couple of months ago. He told me other projects I could visit. Turns out that it was a little bit of a misdirection, whereas the turbines that he would use are some, have, are six times noisier than the ones he was referring me to. So take a look at that. Are you being, having a misdirection here, where people are focusing on this, but the problem is really over there? And we should actually have enforcement with penalties? I mean, it's just like if you had, you have laws against theft, but if you don't have any punishment, if there's no consequences, what the heck? Besides, Terrigen's gonna be gone. Now, back in, closing thing is, back in two thousand and six, Naples wanted Ekegen turbine sites moved out of the village Fuchsia. And Ekegen had American consulting professionals in New York, you may remember this. Their environmental consultant did a study, which of course said the problem did not exist. But let me explain why. They said, is they'd be two miles away, and in their text it says, "Visual dominance would only occur within two thousand feet." And these are those half-size, two point five megawatt turbines. What's the visual dominance of these Terrigen monsters, more than twice the height of the Statue of Liberty? Should they be three thousand feet away, four thousand feet away? Think about this, and think about whether or not people are trying to tell you to look at this when actually you should be looking at something else in terms of how it impacted people.
Thank you. Josh, man.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Deborah Jones, I'm a resident of the village of Italy, the town of Italy, sorry. I'm a registered nurse and I'm currently the director of obstetrics at Thompson Hospital in Cannon Bay, Illinois. I came here tonight to speak about potential effects of low-frequency noise from the turbines on pregnant women and their fetus. For almost the entirety of my forty-five-year career as a nurse, I have worked in labor and delivery. I am here tonight to speak about the vulnerability of babies exposed to low-frequency noise. While in utero, the structures of mom's uterus and placenta filter out most high-frequency noise, so the fetus almost exclusively hears low-frequency noise. Fetuses have quiet sleep cycles typically lasting two to three hours, not unlike after they're born. We know that fetal exposure to low-frequency noise results in a rapid transition to active REM sleep and an increase in heart rate and adrenaline production. An example is mom's experience of the baby moving when he hears her voice. I cannot imagine the effect of constant exposure to low-frequency noise for the fetus. Will she live in a constant state of stress without the quiet time needed for normal growth and development? And what will be the organ-damaging effect of vibroacoustic stimulation on the fetus's fragile developing organs? We have data. Numerous studies in humans and animals have shown correlation with this noise exposure and fetal abnormalities including growth restriction, premature birth, and particularly hearing loss. Low-frequency noise stimulates the inner ear and causes damage to the cochlea. In a study of four to ten-year-old children, there was a threefold increase in hearing loss when the mother was exposed to chronic low-frequency noise during pregnancy. I am privileged every day to witness a newborn opening her eyes and looking around when she hears her mama's voice. I am frightened for the future of families living near these turbines and urge everyone to consider the plight of this innocent and vulnerable population. Thank you.
Josh.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, my name's Steve Maticek. My family cares about the environment and a sustainable future. When we heard about wind turbines, we thought that they were probably coming, we accepted it. And so our position is kind of taking one for the team. However, after looking into turbines more, my wife and I became increasingly concerned about the, about the concept of infrasound, which is a consequence of these turbines. The basic idea is that a low-frequency sound that you can't even hear is emitted as the turbine passes, as the turbine blade passes by the tower, and that this low-frequency sound vibration passes through walls of houses and is associated with all kinds of harmful health effects, which are found more often in the very old and the very young. I'm concerned about the health of my three young children, their ages are three, five, and seven. We will be close to several turbines. If this project goes through, we will try to move, but we don't wanna pass this problem on to some other house buyer. And we're not even sure if we're able to sell our house. If we're starting, we're starting to feel kind of trapped where we are. So if you've been approached by Terrigen with a good neighbor agreement, which would allow them to build a turbine closer than the required minimal distance to your home or your property line, please look into the harmful health risks associated with infrasound and consider the effects that these turbines could have on other members of our community. Remember, these turbines will be a third taller than those in Cohocton and generate a lot more power. When I buy a car for our family, I don't just take the car salesman's word that the car is in top shape. I look under the hood and inspect the engine. I research the car, including its strengths and potential problem areas. Check the safety ratings and re-reviews people have, who have owned these same type of models. Someone who isn't handy with cars might even ask an expert for advice. And that's just for a car. These wind turbines are much bigger commitment and will have a huge impact on our daily lives, as well as the health and well-being of our neighbors, our community, our wildlife, our soils, and our land. The Terrigen salesman has told us that the potential benefits of the wind turbines are available. No one is sharing the potential risks. That is on us to find out, and I'd rather find out before the turbines are built, not afterward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brock, I mean, this is Joshua Harmon, and those are our two kids, Aria and Nora.
Ma'am, you don't have to use your time for here, you're on the agenda.
Oh.
You don't have to hurry for your three minutes.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Mine was short, but thank you for letting me, I can breathe now.
Well, this is really, you can, you can wait, 'cause you're on the agenda later on, so you can...
Perfect, I think that would be better for everybody.
All right, okay.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Eva.
Hi, next to go, hello, everyone. My name is Melissa Marsleck, and my husband and I bought land here in Prasburg around ten years ago. We've lived here about seven years. And I have a background in environmental studies and natural resource conservation, so I really care about the environment pretty deeply. I was the director of a nature center for seventeen years, closer to Rochester before we moved down this way. But I'm not gonna really talk about the environment tonight, because I think there's a bigger picture. Basically, a bigger picture that we need to consider with the Terrigen turbine. So I prepared some notes, I'm normally a freestyler, but I wanted to keep myself on focus here for three minutes. So, I understand that our beautiful town of Prasburg is financially stressed. I understand that. Lived here for a while, and I understand that this opportunity that the town has to make some money, some revenue for the town is, at first glance, a sort of shiny opportunity, right? But I think that there are some other things we need to consider. I think that looking at the long-term net impact of what a project like this is gonna look twenty, thirty years from now and how it's going to affect the community, not just a quick paycheck right now for people, but to take a time to actually do that evaluation and that analysis. There are documents available, I am happy and volunteer to help with that process. If the town decides that they wanna partake in that. If they don't, I'm gonna start that process myself, because I'm not sold from Kevin Sheen. If you look at his website, he's only sharing one side, the benefits. He's not sharing any of the risks. If you look at his website, he hasn't even listed the open house for the residents on it to come this week. It's not even on there. They don't, I looked right now, it's not on there. The October one's on there.
No, it's on there.
I saw it this afternoon.
I just looked today and I could not find it.
Maybe they just added it.
Yeah, maybe they just added it, but, so my concern is more long-term economic impact. My husband and I plan to have building plans submitted to Fred this spring, and we're stopping that. We're not planning to build our permanent home here right now. And there's several other families that I also know that have stopped and are gonna wait and see what happens, because I didn't move to the end of a dirt road in a beautiful town like this so that I could live in an industrial zone. I already, I'm next to thirty.
So the January twenty-third regular meeting?
I did see one correction to be made. See it under special meeting minutes, January ninth, two thousand and eighteen, which is too early to make that correction. Is that correct, and I include the minutes? I'll second it.
It's already corrected.
Okay, motion made, seconded. I got a second.
Yep.
To approve the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty meeting, all favor. The special meeting, January thirtieth. Any additions or corrections?
Can you add Kathy concert on the... Oh, what?
Kathy was here for the...
How are you?
Yeah, this was our Article Ten, but you only kept sharing things that were voted out correctly. Yeah, I was kind of thrown off, and I was like, well, you have to talk about more of it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion made, second, we approve the minutes of the January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty meeting, all favor.
Aye.
Aye, carry. Minutes, and, oh, financial report.
I think a motion because the financial report is presented. Might be some more cheers are out of court than being someplace. There's cheers back, I can't watch anymore. I'll make a motion, second.
Motion made, second, accept the financial report as presented, all favor. Aye, carry.
I think Angela's doing...
Oh, okay.
Do we have appropriations?
No, no appropriations. Uh, well, we get out of here, so. Okay.
Wow, that was quick. All right. I get out my little paper here. Good evening. Since our last meeting, we have plowed and sanded twenty-two times and sanded only seven times. We worked our way through a couple of snowy events and one freezing rain issue. In between plowing, the men have been hauling sand to the barn for a total of a thousand seventy-two tons this month. Our splinters is now out of sand, so we must make do with what we have in the barn. The men have also hauled in one A-stone from Billmite, a hundred and forty-nine ton. We cut brush twice on Hoxton Road, and we had a tree down on Burke Road. We boom mowed on four separate occasions when the weather was warm. We cleaned up all the snow piles around town. I had S.J. Coolah haul in miscellaneous crush gravel during the warm spell, getting ready for pothole season. So a total of six hundred and nine ton. Besides regular repairs and maintenance, Truck Two-O-Three replaced a motor valve and a U-joint. And Truck Three-O-Four, we dumped eight cylinder and fixed a bed chain. And all the trucks that sometime or another this month have had light issues, which they've all fixed in-house. I met with Dave from Soup Co., started to get figures around for summer season for one stone and paving. Respectfully, and I sent to the board quotes on new motor graders, and I have price on the tentative.
What did you send them? You said, you said you sent them?
I sent them, yes. I sent them to Pete, and he was gonna forward them to you, but I did not have your number.
Oh, did you forward? When? That I did not get?
Okay.
That's okay, thank you.
So, I have three quotes here, one is from Case, that's really not an issue because it's undersized. The biggest motor grader they have is almost under horsepower or less than what we have now, and it's six thousand pounds lighter. So that's kind of out of, out of the question. And the other two quotes are from John Deere and from Caterpillar. Now, there's leasing options on both. Caterpillar said that they would work, whatever kind of lease we wanted to work, they would work with us, it didn't matter. There's two leasing options in the back for the John Deere. The only difference in the two is the Internet or the Caterpillar comes with a brand-new plow and a wing, where the John Deere, they are going to retrofit our wing and plow. And there's a difference of eight thousand dollars between the two. So, wanna send them over to Angela so she can look at them.
So what, a couple of questions I agree with.
Sure.
What's ours on the current graders we have?
Twenty-three, forty-three.
Yeah, it was kind of, I was looking at it on my phone, we sent that over, a little closer look with... Are they, what they offering for that on trade?
Okay, now here's the deal, they don't, they won't offer anything on trade. Both, I talked to both people separately, and both told me the same thing, that they would, they would take it on trade, but they weren't gonna give you anything, they were not gonna burn on the deal. They would make money out of it no matter what. Both of them said that we should take it right to Auctions International. So, what's going on is the Volvo no longer makes graders, and the town of Pauline had problems there, which is a lot older than our machine. They lost their rear end, and they finally found a rear end over in Switzerland, I think it was, and it's still not right. And the town of Urbana, they had a Volvo grader, no, I got it backwards. Urbana had a problem with the rear end, Pauline had a computer issue, and they finally found a computer for it, and they can't find anybody to program it. So they messed around, they finally got here to run. Ours is a twenty-thirteen, and I don't, it's, well, halfway is life. I mean, we could run it another five years and maybe never have a problem with it, but if it breaks down, that's what we're gonna do. We can't find parts for it, so.
And the one thing about, we talked about taking, the grader be working more with the blade than the plow on it, rather than trying to retrofit it onto it.
So.
Do you know what the age of the current, what's the, I have problems in Urbana and Volvo, are they intended to know?
I believe Pauline's a two thousand and seven, I don't know about Urbana.
When you spec these out, do you spec them with the blades? Why, where are they offering to retrofit the blades?
Because the motor grader we have, Chris Jensen never used the power of the wing on it. He just, for what, he only used the wing, but he never used the plow, so it was like brand-new. The guy started using it for the first time last year, so it's like a brand-new plow. So when I asked these guys for prices, I figured if it was cheaper for the town, we would just use the plow and wing that was, we already had available.
But if you try to auction it without blades?
Well, I think there's snow plow, right? It's not the, it's not the, it's not the grader.
No, it's a snow plow.
Just a snow plow.
Were you auctioning it, are people looking for the snow plow on it, or just the...
When I talked, when I talked to both of the salesmen, they said you might get lucky and find a municipality out there, that only has eight or nine miles of dirt road to do, and he said they'd be happy to pay decent money for it, 'cause it's been less than a long time. He says, or there might be people out there trying to buy it for parts, you part them out. He says, really, he says, but if they're gonna take it to trade it, he says, they're not gonna burn on the deal, they're gonna offer you thirty-five or forty thousand dollars to make sure that they sell their own money, so.
The maintenance is a big, and this is a piece of equipment that, as John said earlier, with tips, money, and everything else, we gotta have this thing on.
Gotta be running all the time, yeah.
Well. Well, we can't, I mean, Pauline last year, they broke down, they were able to borrow, probably six or seven companies, a good share of the summer. We actually went over twice and helped Pauline out, and we actually helped our ground last year on one day. But you can't always expect somebody to be able to come over and help us in the little summer, and I also doing airwork too. So it's kind of a sticky issue, 'cause we, it could last three or four years and never have a problem.
Is this something we have to blow on tonight?
Nope.
Did you make our copy list before we leave tonight?
So you can see the price difference over the years.
Which truck are you replacing, or what, how old?
The 2000.
And how many hours did the grader have?
2343.
You want to do something about if you go out in the hot days? Yeah, we're getting, just for our call, some chairs up there.
Yeah, we got chairs back here, we can pull them forward.
Yeah, we're getting much different.
Can't, can't sit in front of the doorway.
Yes, make a roll, please.
This, this weed, no, it's a, it's a.
Here, could you take the chair?
It'll have no air cool, put it on the weed box, like, because we're always trying to get your parts.
This is replaced, the 2000, the 2000, yeah, the one Steve traded. I think that's one's been kind of neck and worn down to death as well, hasn't it?
Yeah, well, that's the one we just got rid of there, the last one, those rocks. Yeah, I didn't put extra money in the 2008 over the last year, trying to get that weaved up and ready, so it'll last another couple more years. Let them over and work into it.
So, did you get another proposal for that truck, or is this the only?
I did not, because we already have two P's, and they traded us real well, and they've got a good warranty plan. And it's just easier when you, when you buy, and you get three trucks all the same, the fuel filters are same, the air filters are the same.
Is this, are we able to do that then?
What?
Are we able to only get one? The time?
No, we should have, well, are these off the state grid, or are they?
Yeah, it's off the, on the DIA.
The DIA is allowing other municipalities to pick up on it?
Yep.
Okay, so it's.
Let me check, make sure, I'm pretty sure.
Well, you got, you got to comply with the town's procurement policy also. So, I'll step in here, two or three.
Okay, so I can do that.
I mean, I understand your point, I have to see, but, like, to make sure we're doing it correctly.
The alternative is if you're buying all the same manufacturer, you need a resolution for.
Best value?
Not best value, but if you're buying the same manufacturer because of paternity of parts and maintenance materials, you need a resolution to that effect.
Well.
But if you're just looking for the best pricing, you got to look for two or three. I think you found what the procurement policy says. I suspect there's something like this that would be three.
Yeah.
Again, that's, it's, we get good service, excellent service, to be speaking. Okay, you're done?
Yep, I am done.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
You want to take Fred's, please? Well, Fred, well, Fred is, I don't have any.
You can have paperwork, you can read for him.
No, I don't believe you left any.
I thought he was going to be, I was certain he was going to be here.
Feel a little extra special. Okay. The, I've talked to Schuler's office, and Galloren, and any and all assembly, and all of, about our sewer project, and they've got, it sounds good. I went to a meeting last night for last, according to Southern Tier Planning, in regard to some grant, the ARC grants. It's, I think, I think that's in hand, but I'm not sure. I want to remind everybody, the 25th, down the firehouse, the company will be there 6:00 to 8:00, to answer questions, and encourage you all to be there. The, well, we're gonna, we thought, we're gonna have a special meeting this next week to interview for the site board, in that we, we feel that we should formulate some questions, and each one would be entitled to answer the same questions. And so we'll, tonight, probably, we will try to, I don't know, think about it, and try to come up with a date for another special meeting. Any suggestions?
In terms of questions, or?
No, but I'd suggest, you know, we get, you know, write down some stuff, then we.
Oh, yeah.
And then we'd have a special meeting and do the, you know, special meeting.
I know I'm out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week.
Yeah, let's.
Well, Tuesday's bad, ain't it?
Thursday?
Thursday works, I mean.
Thursday's good, I mean.
Six thirty?
What time?
I mean, I suppose it could be the 30 is, um.
Six?
No, no. I have to pay the library, so I'm not going to pay them later.
Oh, okay, oh.
I mean, it's only going to be probably an hour, correct?
Yeah, because we're, yeah.
Well, probably the one, the one earlier, right? Is 7:00 too early for you, or too late for you? Is that good for you?
I'll check.
Okay. So just give me a little more time.
Do you see this one still? Yeah, it's like.
So the car covered, please?
Yep. You need me there, Ben, when?
Unless you got some important questions. Probably, probably snowing under more lately.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve the special meeting?
Yes.
Set down February 27th, at 7:00 PM.
I'm sure you're right.
27, 27.
Oh, I thought it was 7:00. 27.
Can you take care of posting that, giving it to the paper?
Okay, motion made, signed, we have a special meeting, February 27th, in regard to interviewing for the site board. All favor.
Aye.
Both, carry.
Tony, did you second that?
Okay. Bike race.
Yeah, did you get my update? I sent. Yeah, things are going all well. Pretty much all the logistics are falling into place. I know that Rick over at the fire department recently received a detailed race map of multiple courses, so that's on hand. They're going to meet, I believe, 9:00 AM, day of race, just to go over things. So really, all that's left is to kind of work out some marketing around it and some promotion. Tony Seiler's wife will be coordinating a kids' event in town square a lot like they did last year.
Nice.
Despite races.